All right, hang on. All right. Let's please rise and we'll do the... Mr. Cox, you can do this in the pledge and I will leave as an invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Lord, please bless us today and Powhatan as we seek to do the people's business. Amen. All right. Any requests to postpone or amend today's agenda? Seeing none, I agree with the agenda as presented. One second. Any questions or comments on the motion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. We'll have our first public comment period. Anyone wishing to speak, please state your full name and address and limit your comments to three minutes or five minutes if you're speaking as a group, for a group. Anyone? Anybody on Zoom?
We do not have invited the hand raised.
Anybody on their end? Okay, seeing no one, I will close the public comment period. And tonight, we have the beginning of our workshop discussion for the update of the comprehensive plan, chapters one through seven. And I believe this would be Mr. Pompey, will you be leading the discussion?
I have an overview of the process today. You're going to start talking about the first seven chapters of the document. So, of course, the current comprehensive plan was adopted in June of 2019. We've announced a multi-year effort, starting in late summer, early fall of last year. The board supervisors expressed an interest in reviewing and updating the comprehensive plan for two joint workshops between the planning commission and board supervisors in September and October. And at those meetings, the board supervisors charged the planning commission with reviewing the 2019 documented recommendations and updates, focusing primarily on chapter eight, which uses the unique character of chapter nine, transportation. So, the planning commission held a series of workshops in late 2020, early 2021, developed a plan made forward to all updates and changes. The planning commission held a public hearing on April 6th and proposed a change to all board room. And then, we also had a preview of the planning commission's work at your workshop. So, we kick this off, we'll start looking at the draft docs from chapters one through seven. These are chapters that the planning commission did not spend much time focusing on because outside of their charge, but there were some updates to do in that happening. So, we can go ahead and start with the first chapter, chapter by chapter.
Exactly.
Let's get started.
Yeah.
You really can't approach the comprehensive plan always in a version. The economic development, housing, vision and goals, and infrastructure and natural cultural resources set the balance and the parameters and provide you with the information that you need in order to do chapters eight and nine. You can't ignore it. As I looked at it, they don't balance have to be rewritten. They do not require reality of today and have substantial changes that are needed. I do not believe we can go through this thing and make a couple line edits, line edits, and move on. I think there's substantial questions that this board did not address, that are unaddressed in here, that need to be touched on itself. It's not going to, as I see it, is not going to be a fast process. And we're not going to get through chapters one through seven at all. I believe that we're going to have to take a look at, take a chapter, chapter four, economic development. That, in fact, we need to look at that in a different light. We need to understand what we're trying to do. And that's going to call for a discussion, ideas and thoughts. Viola's thoughts, Tom's thoughts, might be very different for one. So, I'm looking this evening to begin that discussion, that dialogue, so that we can begin to put together these chapters and try to bring the represent the kinds of things that I think we will need. So, that's where I'm at.
I don't know if the sentiment of the rest of the board is, follows that.
That doesn't bother me a bit.
Yeah, you know, I mean...
I'm prepared to tear it apart.
See, I am, personally, I'm not. I think the chapters that we need to really focus on were the ones that were charged with chapter eight and nine. That's me personally.
No ma'am, absolutely not.
I don't agree, Mr. Cox.
Well, eight and nine is built on the other chapters.
Correct. But now, this is a prime example, we have gone months and months. We charged the planning commission, we're looking at chapters eight and nine, and now we're back to square one and we need to rewrite the whole plan. That was not what was addressed in our workshop in September.
Well, okay, we're going to disagree, but let's see how far you're going to get with that, okay? Because we're going to go line by line.
Mr. Cox, if you want to go line by line, we can go line by line.
I do, because I have questions about, okay? I have things that I would like changed.
And you need three votes to get those changed?
I understand that. You want to vote on every line? It's going to be an interesting evening, ma'am.
Okay, well...
Excuse me, ma'am.
Yes.
It's an interesting thing, me. I went back and watched the 9/22 tape, the October 20th tape. What we did was, we told them, them being the planning commissions, that we were going to, we were interested in changing future land use. There was a comment that was made by a board member that says, "I had no interest in delving into housing statistics." And they go on on that. So, from my perspective, this comp plan, the comprehensive plan is an advisory document intended to guide zoning decisions and public investment. The planning commission and the board supervisors consider the plan's recommendations. I think the details that we get into are zoning. I think that's where we can get into where we have something that has some bite. We don't, we're good at zoning, excuse me. Yes. The comprehensive plan is basically the guideline for us all to make these decisions. Now, if you want to go back, as a board, and go through the line by line, then we need to shuffle this right back to the planning commission with directions correct this time, they'll change it. At that point, I think that we need to have a motion to do that, to send it back to them. And they can reevaluate it. We can make that motion, I can make that motion, ma'am. That's what we want to do.
I do not want to do that.
I do not want to send it back. I want to fix it.
But...
Let me, sorry, I'm done, I'm done. The problem with what you're suggesting is there is a conflict in the document and what you see in the land use plan, they have to support each other and they will not.
Then maybe a better approach would be to start with chapter eight, the land use document, and then go back and fix a few points in economic development and housing to marry up with chapter eight. I mean, that's another way to tackle it.
Well, there's certainly one way to tackle it, but that presumes if you have agreement on what housing should look like.
And we may not.
Okay, but why would you start with the land use piece rather than starting with housing? So, that the land use piece reflects what you said it didn't.
I think what would help is, can you give us an example of, like, what you don't want? I mean, maybe that will help. Can you give an example of, like, something that you, let's just dig into housing. I know I'm jumping ahead a little bit, but let's just dig into housing. Can you give me an example of something of how you want to rewrite the whole chapter on housing? So that maybe it'll lend some clarity to what you're considering.
That's page 21. So, we start, I'm sorry, I'm looking. You got your, I'm looking at this.
Okay, yeah, yeah, no worries. I can find it, yeah. Okay, you go.
All right. So, we'll start with a very overview, very first paragraph. An overview. What it doesn't state is the obvious. The obvious is, we are a, just to show you, we are single-family, 90% community. The question is, that's where we are today. We wanted to stay that way, okay?
Okay.
So, some homeowners prefer a single-family home and rules that in others want low maintenance housing, close shopping and other amenities. I would tell you that's, that is not what I'm trying to build in that one. It is a suburban view. Shopping amenities, close to, that's not the bulk of the mountain. That's not the housing that I see us building. Okay, so that's important. So, if you want to have that, then your land use plan will look a different way. If you don't want that, and you're going to say, we're going to state essentially a single-family, owner-occupied, 10% rental, then your land use plan is going to look a lot different. This says, what we county allow... We start talking about providing a diversity of housing. How diverse do we want that? Because that's going to have a direct effect on what we say about our land and our land use intensities. Okay, so we've got to come, we've got to come to some agreements on these basic things that you really can't do.
Yeah, I mean, I think, if you're being a little dramatic, I think we could get through, no offense, I think we could get through this without rewriting the whole thing. I think just kind of plugging through. I think we could get through it and...
Let's go back and start and I'll tell you where I have problems.
All right.
Give you a second. Let's start with the overview of the plan. In the very first paragraph, comprehensive plan provides a plan, not a vision, a plan. Right. Let me get over here. Over here, anyone? I'm going to say more here. Very stark overview of the plan.
It's two-page number, one's a big legitimate number.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay? It's a plan for how the community might grow? No, it's how it's going to grow, or how we want it to grow. It's not how it might grow. We're trying to actually determine how it's going to grow. Okay? Moving on down to the second paragraph, once adopted, the plan is a guide. It is not a guide. I'm sorry. It is not a guide. I would remove the term a guide. Comprehensive plan, you look at, every time someone says it's a guide and they're supervising, it means they don't want to follow a comprehensive plan. That's what it means. If you look at our zoning ordinance, where our zoning ordinance says it's there to implement the Powhatan County Comprehensive Plan. That's what it's designed to. That's much more than a guide. Also, it has legal, it has legal status. It is not binding. It's not binding at all, okay? But it has legal status. If we were to ignore the comprehensive plan...
We have to go back to mandates.
We have, we have to come up with some really good reasons why, or we open ourselves up for loss. We can't just ignore it. So, it's more than just a guide. It has, it has a whole different status.
But state code says it's a guide.
No.
I'm pretty sure state code says it's a guide.
It's not a guide.
It's a guide.
No, it's not a guide. Is there any guidance that you guys have in that?
I would say it's a guide, because it's an advisory document. What you described is a guide, because again, it's easy if you have the reasons. You're not a warrant.
Yeah, it's a guide. I mean, it's, I don't know...
It's not a guide. Do we need any zoning ordinances?
Yes.
Did it give you... No, 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 no. 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 It is not binding, okay? But it's much more than a guide, okay? It's much more than just a simple set of directions. I'm sorry.
Mr. Berry, what do you want to call it?
I'd call it a guide, because there is some deviation allowed with reasoning.
All right, now, where's...
It all on purpose of the plan. Rather... Where are we? Semi-colon says the word rather. She's there for him.
I got a vote.
She's trying to keep up.
Oh, perfect.
She's trying to keep up.
I'm trying.
Okay. Oh, yeah, I got you. Comprehensive plan, not should be, is. You're not talking about it, I mean, it is. That's what we're doing. It's not, it should be a broad detection, fiction on the best part, but it is, okay? These recommendations should focus on issues that the county has ability to control and the things for future vision. Won't we have that in there? These recommendations should focus on issues that the county has ability to control and the things, the things that you want. We put that in there. Of course, we're not going to put anything in there that we can't deal with. We go to the next chap, the next paragraph. And we start talking about, provide more in-depth and strategic data and policy. Doesn't talk about our 10-year capital improvement plan, doesn't talk about a 10-year financial plan, all of which are major documents, major authorities that have an impact on it.
Certainly add something in there with that, to, to those two. Where is it?
It's not annual budgets. We have 10-year budgets and 10-year forecast and 10-year CIPs. This is a significant change. So, Allison, you don't mind if I put that note on the side, you know?
Yeah, what, I mean, that's...
Yeah. You just slide it aside. If you go down to the bottom of that column, the last one is the recommendations herein are provided for consideration and will develop further with the regulatory note. The recommendations contained herein provide the framework for regulatory tools. Regulatory tools come from this document. Okay. Go to the next, right above that picture. Talking about the legal basis to the comprehensive plan. Says, by law, the, by law, the plan must also address affordable housing within the county. Question is, why do we single that out? There are a number of things that are required by a comprehensive plan that are in the code beyond simply fair housing. Example. Comprehensive plan shall consider strategies to provide broadband infrastructure that's sufficient to meet the current future needs. It goes on, it's like, listen, a number of things.
Why don't we just strike that sentence?
Yeah, why would that not be said about?
Let's just strike that sentence then, okay?
I mean, it does that, but there are other things too.
Yeah, it draws our attention there.
Okay.
Now, we're chapter two. Page seven. Key themes of the plan, maintain rural character. That's what we're trying to maintain, not just the character. We're trying to maintain rural character. It's got... Do you have or not, okay? Go to key themes of plan, maintain rural, okay? Now, the dominant land form and maintaining the important visual character of the county is central to this plan. Visual is the word is probably the most important word that's in that entire discussion. Visual should be highlighted, because that's what we think about the ride up and down the counties and byways, byways and highways. It's what... Says, Powhatan County is not to become universally suburban or metropolitan in character. Take that out. Why we should be talking about what we're not going to be rather than what we're going to be? Where is that? Okay, got you.
Yeah, second sentence.
Or the top of page seven, second column. Where it says, development in a responsible and purposeful way. This is, that does not destroy the area's rural character. No, it preserves the rural character. Once again, we're talking about negatives and things that we don't want. It's a positive. We want to preserve the rural character. Okay, now, we're into provide services to current and future residents. I think we need to have a statement in here that says, "We want the rural Powhatan. You should not expect the same level of services that you get in a suburban community."
Depends on where you are in Powhatan, though. Like, if you're in Founder's Bridge or the Village, I think it's a little too...
But your fire response, EMS response, okay? For my house, no.
Correct.
Okay?
That's always sounded...
But the other thing is, the other thing is, we're on there.
I'm not comfortable putting that in there.
Okay, well, we're not going to provide the same level of services that you get in a more suburban area. Let me give you an example. We just approved, or the county did, eight new, on eight new lots on Washum Road. Okay, they're 10 acres. It's all by right. It all has a mound frontage on a paved road. So, we're taking 80 acres and we turn them into eight lots. So, now, we've got eight people potentially going to, and there is no cell service and there is no broadband service, okay? So, now, I've got, coming at me, eight new citizens' families who are going to be unhappy because their services aren't what they hoped to be. That's for that. How do you, but there has to be an expectation of what you're going to get.
Correct. And what my only point would be is, later in these chapters, when you go under fire and rescue and you go under broadband, we iterate how we want to provide, you know, have X number of minutes to a call and this and everything else. I think that's a negative thing to put in there. That's all I'm saying. I mean, if it's a deal breaker, put it in.
It's also true. And this is a, this is the paragraph that says, in our overview, we're providing services to current and future residents. This is what we're going to do. We're not going to provide the same level. It's not a negative thing, it's just a statement. We're not going to provide the same level of service that you, you might get in a suburban area. That's all.
Mr. Vilew, Mr. Berry, what do you guys want to do?
Well, I'm with our strategic goals and objectives. Goal number two, excellent public services. Right there, 2.11, 2.22, I mean, all the way down. Everything's listed right there. And that's what our collectively, in unanimity, was said at our meeting.
It's not, well, here it isn't negative. It's not saying it's going to be the same level of services. We're going to provide some services. But I'm going to understand, you're in the country.
Our level of service, our excellent level of service is something different than sitting in a suburban area. Agreed. Okay, that's all this is saying, okay? It's that, it's not the same. Somewhere along the line, this is probably what's in the book. You've got to think for yourself. You know, if you've got an mother in Powhatan, you're not in Shoreville. And I, believe me, I hear the phone calls from the same, "What you here now?" I hear the same phone calls, you know, "Where's my service at?" "I get what you're saying there." But, I don't know. You know, I get back to thinking, you know, what citizens have said in our meetings and, you know, we go through and we're getting into this word by word by word by word. You know, the more rules and policies we make, the more difficult it becomes and democratic it becomes. If there's something we can do to make it better, okay? But I'm going to be hung, I can tell you, we go through every chapter this. I'm going to be hung on, it's a guide. That's where I'm going to be hung. That it's not going to change. You know me well enough. That's where I'm going to be. It's a guide. I just don't think we can hedge this in stone. I don't see that, personally, just me.
What's you about?
Maintaining fiscal sustainability. There, we need to bring in some language dealing with what we have done with our 10-year plan and our 10-year CIP, because we've taken that way down the road.
Okay.
This plan acknowledges that there is pressure to growth that supports reasonable levels of development while maintaining the county's rural character, providing adequate services and maintaining fiscal responsibility. This cannot be overstated. Overall rule for this plan is to position Powhatan County such as Park and Spalding land codes can be accommodated without compromising other aspects of county life that are most valued. The plan describes areas in which growth can be best be accommodated and areas where growth should be minimized, taking into account broad range goals and objectives. I think that paragraph needs to be written to acknowledge the fact that we are not going to accommodate all levels and kinds of growth. There's just some things, if you want to, if you're going to keep the county as rural as we hope to, there's some things you just are not going to do. And so, you're not going to accommodate everything. And so, it's a level of accommodation that you came to find. How do we define adequate services? Because he says, supports reasonable levels of development while maintaining county's rural character, providing adequate services and maintaining fiscal sustainability. How do we define adequate services? In, in a comprehensive plan, we don't define the level, okay? That gets done in another document. You can't take a comprehensive plan to that level. But our vision statement does begin to do that, our strategic plan.
Yeah.
Okay? That's, it's only so far you can push the comprehensive plan. But our strategic plan attempted to do that.
All right. I can take a look at that.
Yeah, I mean, we have measurables with that. Okay? Let's go to page eight. The previous comprehensive plan discussion. The second paragraph, most of the goals, concepts and strategy outlined in the 2021 comprehensive plan reflect the vision established in the 2010 comprehensive plan and 2019 comprehensive plan. I sure as hell hope not. We put this in, we started this process to make a significant change and the 2019, which was a, just a tweak of the 2010. So, no, our goals and concepts, when we get divisions and strategy, they're very different. Coming straight from my strategic plan, so it is not...
Okay, we can mess it up.
Very different. As you, as you move on down to the discussion of the 2010 comprehensive plan, there's no discussion of distortions created by UDA's and requirement that we have high-density housing. And that, that was central to the problem with that plan. The 2019 comprehensive plan, the goal there is, as, just come back, you and I received from the board supervisors was simply to tweak the plan, not to rewrite it. And so, I would like to see a more interesting, better discussion of what really happened with these two plans. And one of the reasons why we're at today, we had a 2010 plan that was twisted by requirement, a state that had been dropped. The 2019 comprehensive plan was to do a modest tweak to it, not to rewrite it. The other parallel column that goes with that, influencing trends, regional growth influences. Here, I'm confused. Why do we care?
We're reading them.
Are there, anybody?
I don't turn.
I did.
So, regional growth influences, I understand all this is going on in Chesterfield County. But in fact, that doesn't necessarily, the fact that they want to build, an example, the fact that they want to build 1100, 9 to 1100 apartment around Westchester Commons really doesn't impact us.
Although it does down here, the, when it iterates the planning in Western Chesterfield, turns out Powhatan should assume that regional growth pressures will continue. I think that's kind of the purpose of it, just saying that the growth pressures are going to...
But I'm just, most of that discussion, of course, our neighbors are going to have some influence. But in fact, we're trying to create a very different kind of community than they are. Chesterfield was taking the Middle Oak and Parterre and just gone at it as fast as it can as many apartments.
You're right.
Okay. And that's not what we're trying to do. That's...
I don't know. I take it or leave it. I don't know. And what are your thoughts on keeping that?
This has been in several iterations of the plan. I think the plan is to say, hey, not that we're not being our neighbors, but they are growing and eventually I heard it's a challenge of how it's going to count, how we're going to keep up those pressures. If it comes out, it comes out.
Yeah.
Maybe it stays in that, and the next nation said, hey, grow from Richmond to LA.
But in fact, this whole document is about how we plan to grow our county, not...
Right. I don't care. I mean, you guys care if it comes out the same terms. It doesn't matter to me.
I don't care.
Yeah, I don't care.
Listen, Mr. Williams, where we are. We've had a couple of disagreements.
Yeah, we were off to a wrong start.
Where... I should go back home?
We're off to a wrong start. We haven't gotten to chapter one.
There was a question whether we should be going through this line by line and changing it. I have insisted that that's something I wanted to do. That was not something that Stormack wanted to do.
Did you want to go line by line or not?
He wants to go line by line.
And that the chapters, housing, economic development, infrastructure, and visions determine what you can do when you get to the land you've got there, the bait and transportation, nine. So you do a good job of this, if you can't do that. Not everybody agreed with me. So far, they've let me talk. Is that fair?
Sir, you've gotten some changes. You've gotten some changes. Calm down.
We're on page 18 now. We're just not bad progress.
Exactly. City actually, we're on page two. We're almost done. At 3:30, we'll keep going.
You talked so far?
So much of what we are going to do is, and I know we don't want to talk so much about our neighbors, but we are going to be, continue to be influenced. They're rapidly running out of space between the urbanized area and the county law.
Since the beginning of time, it's coming west.
Yes, I seem to remember where you like stopped the Chesterfield Town Center.
It's coming west. There's no stopping it. It's coming west.
So we might as well acknowledge that we're going to be significantly influenced, or at least asked about it in the coming years versus, no, it's not.
Yeah, we're ignoring it.
But in fact, when you talk to the citizens of Powhatan, when you're knocking on their doors...
Oh, they don't want it.
No. Okay, so that, they elected us. So that's, our job is to not let Chesterfield determine what we're going to be.
Exactly. And I don't think this paragraph does that. I think it's just saying it trapped. I mean...
Well, it's saying, here it comes. Get ready to catch it. County law is coming to you.
I just take it to mean that we're already considering, we know this is going to impact us.
Yeah.
Not that we're going to do what they're doing, but we acknowledge that we're about to be impacted. That's my take on it.
Chapter three, vision and goals.
Matt Cherry, could you indulge me just for two minutes? One, I apologize for showing up late. But I had some hot points I would like to share, just from chapter one. And I'll be very quick. One of the things I noticed when I looked at other comprehensive plans is they had a statement in there, "The plan should be used to protect and enhance the high quality of life our citizens enjoy today. The problem is the future citizens. In order to maintain the quality of life, we'll see a full future." Comprehensive plan provides a blueprint. And we talked about it, guys. We talked about a lot of things in there.
We've already had this discussion.
They already beat me up. I said that I would take guide out of this and they go to three to one. Say, well, they all want to talk about it in the guide.
We're keeping it.
Okay, if you look at what other counties were saying, they'd say blueprint. I like the word blueprint for development. Y'all want to do it? The same thing I'm really like, what I don't hear coming across, you know, from chapter one, is the plan should be used to protect and enhance the high quality of life of our citizens. At one point in our comprehensive plan, we talked about this being the citizens' plan. Chesterfield talks about how the plan should be used. They even break it up by park builders, developers, resident citizens, staff, and decision makers. We seem to focus on the decision makers. And we'll go back to again, this is for the people in the county. I like that statement because you'll see it in Goodson, you'll see it in Chesterfield's old place. You know, it's a blueprint, again, to protect and enhance the high quality of life of our citizens. So I ask for that for your consideration when they go, oh, you don't have to buy it or anything like that.
No, we're weak. Let's decide. Because what I want to do, I don't want to constantly, you know, go back. If you want to, you know, have a statement like that added in to where you address the citizens, the, you know, I'm fine with doing something like that.
I can add something if you'd like to see it. Chesterfield, so. They also do sometimes, we try to get at it, but it's not as clear and succinct. They'll actually give you in the executive summary, what is the comprehensive plan? And we seem to be doing nullification of what it isn't. And I know a lot, you know, it's on the previous boards. But this is a different board. It says, "Purpose of the plan." Again, ensure Chesterfield county residents continue to enjoy healthy, thriving community of places where residents have the high quality of life, small business, etc. How is the plan created? Again, one sentence. How is the plan implemented? Two sentences. Which is a plan that's not good. We spend a lot of time on what it doesn't do. And then, how is it used? And again, very, it's very tight, very succinct. But I like the format of this one.
You guys want to add something like that?
I would like to think, well, we'll get it and talk about it at our next meeting.
Okay. All right, that's all right. Okay. Or anything else before we get back to chapter three?
This is Chesterfield's.
Yes, sir. But you'll see that kind of statement in that, like, the quality of life of vision as well. We've got here how to plan, how to use the plan. We talked about a vision. We talked about defining vision, goal.
Well, we're just getting chapter through.
Yeah, so you're good. Yeah, so you're, are you done with, Mr. Williams? So you're done with chapter one?
So what, chapter one?
He's not talking about the actual visions and goals, the section in chapter one, page five, that talks about what they mean.
Okay, gotcha.
What page, David?
I'm wondering, page five?
Page five with the plan.
Got you.
How to use the plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, we define a vision, goal, and objective. Then later on, we'll have an opportunity in the plan, which I believe is to bring forward our strategic plan, our vision, our goals, and our objectives. We can do that later on. But I'm not sure what this does for us in terms of defining what is a vision, defining what is a goal, what is an objective. It just doesn't seem to do much.
Are you suggesting this really replaces this?
That's basically, yeah.
Okay.
All right.
You say we're into now?
Yep, now we are on page nine.
Right.
All right, chapter three, vision and goals.
Now, go to page seven real quick. I just have one comment. Where you have the heading, maintain character, I would insert goals.
There you go. Okay.
Don't wake me up.
Yeah, so that, they're trying to keep it up. We'll be able to print all the changes up today.
So where are we now?
We are on page nine, chapter three, vision and goals.
Okay, we're current.
These are our visions, of course.
Okay, so we wanted to...
That was the reason why I asked.
Great. I'm great. The job that I made.
What...
We have a different vision statement.
Would you strike this whole vision statement and just put a vision statement from this? Okay. Got it? That's done? Of the goals.
Goals are different. We have rural lifestyle, lights on public service.
Fishing effective sources of financing, economics.
Straight to the strategic. Yeah, and then she just follow right on down.
Yeah, yeah. This was, this was the fireboard. I was. We worked very hard to get this.
You good, Allison?
So that's easy enough. So basically, just replace all of this with our strategic plan.
Yes.
All right. Moving on.
I mean, I, one comment on that, is like those goals directly related to chapter. They're, more than a now, it's like the cultural importance of the goal, and actually, this is the goal, the exact same goal.
I see what you're saying. Yeah, yeah, yeah. It correlates with the...
I don't really, really...
It's going to be here, whatever.
But I just wanted to, that's why you started to front and make the back memory of it. And maybe it's okay, because we have a chapter in transportation that will have its own goal, I guess. Because there's not transportation, directly transportation, where you can use the access public services. And objective is saving efficient transportation.
We're going from seven topics now to five topics in theory. So we're going to have to either compress, move around, stuff.
I guess my question is with these goals, though, I mean, you say it's like the old board's goals, like what cultural resources? Powhatan County cultural and historical resources will be preserved and protected. I mean, that seems pretty broad and I don't really know why.
Well, these are our goals.
Right, but his point is that...
And we're going to fix the comprehensive plan so that it meets our goals. Now, you have to have a transportation section that's required by code.
When you get to each one of these sections, you can get into the specific goals that reflect the strategic plan goals that you have on this page. So you can draw down and get more specific as you go through each one of these chapters. These are the overarching goals from our strategic plan. These are the ones from here.
Yeah, exactly.
Right now, right.
So what we could do is go through the plan and then go back and marry it up with the goals, what's in the...
If we get into a plan, we run into a problem, then we can solve it by looking at that.
Yeah, so that's going to take a little, for year two, let's go through this, we'll be going back to that. Okay, economic development.
Chase, could I have my slide number one that says economic development? The first thing I think we should do with economic development is define what it means for us in the context of this chapter. There is no definition of what we're trying to do with economic development. Just start talking about, well, I guess, you know, this is something we got to do.
Load up a little more, please.
Cut the brain down a little bit. Bring it down a little bit. Strong way. Okay, here is my definition that I work with of economic development, okay? More jobs, lower taxes. Purpose of economic, I don't mean, and I agree with, this is just my view of it here. The purpose of economic development is two-fold, jobs and revenue. Not one or the other, but both, it's simultaneous. Jobs, three lawyers employers, former sectors of Powhatan County are public administration, county prisons, construction, and education services, school. Two of these sectors are primarily funded by taxpayers at some level. The other is highly cyclical. Job growth resulting from economic development should add higher-paying jobs and create a more diverse employer protection. For members, revenue. The county's need for additional revenue can be summarized in one word, infrastructure. Public safety and education are expensive, and currently they're funded primarily by the residential component, 92% of the tax base. Revenue resulting from economic development efforts needs to change the current contribution of the commercial industrial sector in our tax base to approximately 8% to 15%. Goals, reduce the residential taxpayer contribution while protecting our infrastructure costs, which are dominated by schools and rising costs of hiring and that, while changing the job desk. Caution, economic development, which produces a strong revenue stream, but results in a significant increase in infrastructure needs at school, which is paid more by the public, is counterproductive. So I'm looking, why are we worried about economic development? We need to have a statement of what it means to us and what we're trying to accomplish before we go leaning into it. And so as you look at it, economic development, by someone breaking it, you've got something to measure it by. Does it meet these goals? Or whatever goal you're choosing. So to me, it has to have revenue and high-paying jobs. One of our key resources that we have are the 11,000 people we leave this county every day to do work on those. So that is an asset for us. Only here is, I can't find anybody to work with. So we've got 11,000 people, all different types of league in this county. So that's a real...
I don't know if we can quite get closer, I think, Anna.
I don't think we're allowed to close it.
Is that maybe?
Yeah, that's fine. It's not what I told them.
We can't go over the top. So I want to start off with a discussion of economic development. Some description, some understanding of what it is, what it means to us, and what we try to accomplish.
I think one thing I will concur with you on, I think that when I was looking at this chapter, some of the unrealistic, where we had that we wanted to be the 30, you know, that's not reality. That's not going to happen anytime soon. So to define that a little clearer, I agree with. I think...
Can we go back up to the top left, please?
This is a way of talking about this, okay? One of the first statements, purpose of economic development is two-fold, jobs and revenue. Not one or the other, the goal. Does that strike you as being too narrow for...
I don't mind it. But there, you get into the definition, what's considered a high-paying job? What's considered adequate revenue to bring in? For you and myself, that may differ.
But we're not supposed to be defining it in a comprehensive.
Right.
Actually, that's something we should be defining in a strategic, kind of, one of the goals. In fact, is that the goal that you, economic development is producing jobs and revenue? I get you on this whole question of residential growth, which doesn't produce jobs.
Do you all have any comments?
It definitely sets the tone for wanting to bring business. It definitely sets the tone that we want more business.
I have a different approach. That concerns me. That's why. I have a different approach. That concerns me. That's why I think, I think a business could look at that and be like, do they really want my business? If they don't, you know, have high paying jobs or, you know, or if it's a... I, I don't know. I think it could be perceived as a little, a little negative. I think we, we need to...
Completely. If you look at this and you say, okay, I wanna bur, I wanna do a burger doodle house, okay?
Exactly.
That bring, that brings in low pay, whatever minimum wage is today.
Correct.
Okay, and that does not do anything for the movement of people out of the county. Eleven thousand, that's not stopping them. No one's gonna be able to, uh, make a living off of the burger doodle. So the question is, what do you want? What is your target? Doesn't stop the burger doodle hours from coming.
Could it though? I mean, could you then look at this comprehensive plan, say they come in for a rezoning and say, you know what? You don't mean their economic development.
Would that bother you?
Am I?
You really spend your time on manufacturing, the light industrial?
Yeah, but that's, I mean, that's... You gotta be also realistic, not just aspirational. I mean, you know...
I'm not aspirational at all. I'm being very realistic.
Okay. I don't want to use it as a tool to say no to a business. That's what I...
You don't wanna say no to a business. We don't want every business to be no.
Oh, I agree. I'm not saying we want every business, but I also don't wanna use, like I said, I just don't want to, this... That's just me. There's five of us. I mean, I...
That's, that's the reason I got Brendan, got him on the...
There's five of us. I don't wanna use it as a tool to say no to businesses. That's why I'm that. But... We've got three other people that can certainly weigh in.
And I just don't take it as a negative statement. I think, and that's my view, uh, not a small business owner, so I have a slightly different perspective.
Kind of based upon that, you're not gonna have any small businesses.
You're not gonna have any small businesses.
That's what you're saying.
That is.
You're telling them, we don't want you here.
Yeah, that's exactly what you're saying.
That's what you're doing. Based upon that. I got a different view again. I don't know, this, this comprehensive plan, I mean, expert, 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 you and me, these guys have been doing it for eight to twelve years, like that, you know, so I've listened to that a lot.
That's the reason you shouldn't be listening.
Yeah, I have listened to you a lot.
No, I mean, you shouldn't be listening, because, you know, you know, I, I feel like, you know, that I've made or would made mistakes, you know, in their planning in the county. I've been very vocal like that. I say that kidding, but...
Yeah, no, I agree. I mean, to me, the, the, the perspective is, if you come back... Everything's coming to us. We don't, we don't stop it. We manage it. I think we manage it. I think we can manage. You know, we can talk about stuff that's happened and didn't work, you know, the war didn't work, RC zone didn't work. In this plan here, you're basically, to me, you're telling small businesses, no. If you go to, um, the access management standards where you gotta have six hundred and twenty-five feet. There's so many parcels on Route sixty that's one acre, or three acre, six acre, that, well, they'll never meet the access management standards. If there's a, an entrepreneur in Palatine, Virginia, that wants to open up a business. And, uh... He doesn't have a, or she doesn't have any, wants some amount of money, a million dollars plus, they're not coming. Because, I mean, you say the first thing, you gotta put a turn lane on. That knocks you out of the war. It, it takes you completely out. You're done. Definitely with the turn, which is our access management standard. I agree completely that if we don't have revenue from commercial businesses, then, um, the taxpayers better probably, they're on the bill, because it's gonna get higher. We don't offer all these services, but yet, these people are coming on these eight lots, they want broadband, they want this, they want, so in order to get those services, you gotta have this money. In order to get this money, the, the residents create the dis, the, the, um, liability, not really the liability, the, the, the expense, the, the schools and so forth. So my perspective on it is, I, I'm, the glass is half full, and we need to figure out a way to say, yes, we will not get our way on every business that comes down the road. We don't, we don't want everyone. I agree with you on that. But you've gotta find a way. This is, I don't see where there's any great abundance of business coming to Palatine. You can't person to that. I look at the statistics of what we have, who came in and started a business in the last, uh, three to four years. They're not knocking doors. Now, as Chesterfield and Missport are left, we're gonna definitely see more opportunities. How we handle those opportunities, I think, me personally, this forum right here, I like the way we, we, we talk about it, we, we figure out a way to go. Let's implement a way that we think we should go forward as opposed to, whatever we do, the next board... That's why I'm a now person when it comes to that. Let, let's find a way to do something now that make people jump and go and do something. But we're not gonna get the perfect scenario. It won't happen.
Sure. I could, I might just call on Brett Shaw right now. I mean, it's Brett. If he would go and, you know, check with the other localities around, just go Chesterfield, you know, go to Henrico. Talk of them, they had, they did economic development land use in their localities, particularly in situations where you had Route sixty. We can learn a lot from Chesterfield, can't we? Chesterfield, I think, shared with you some of the mistakes that they made. Richmond made some huge mistakes from Bell Boulevard at the Chippenham. They let everybody go. And they gave everybody an entrance. Now they're down something. I'll tell you what, if you wanna get in a quad bar, move to where you're trying to downzone and fix something after the fact. Then you got Chesterfield from Chippenham at the Chesterfield Mall. When they came forward, the state of Virginia did, with their access management standards, because they had to do something. Because they were taking more rides in than they could afford, which meant they didn't have any money left over for new construction. When they did the presentation, they took pictures of in front of Chesterfield Mall with the stoplights. Feed the plot as you go down the front of Chesterfield Mall, and they said, this is not what we want on the fall picture. So it's a lot that we can learn as we come out on Route sixty, from what's already developed on Route sixty. In Richmond, from Bell Boulevard at the Chippenham, Chesterfield, hopefully at the Chesterfield Mall. We can learn from those mistakes. And when Brett went and talked to Chesterfield, they said they were looking, one thing that they'd made a mistake on was not the consolidation parcels.
You have to allow it to be developed individually to the depth when you want to pull together bigger project, more cohesive, or have cross-access between projects.
Getting into these individual smaller lots that were never developed because of a turn lane requirement on Route sixty, whether you do it in more stringent six hundred and twenty-five or four forty, with V I, you won't put that turn lane. Come out, okay? So we can get beyond this altruistic, you know, we're gonna just wave that, and, you know, anybody who wants to, as I have a parcel, you wanna open up shop, you can do it, but it ain't gonna happen. Well, it, it can't happen, and you'll look just like you look down there from Bell Boulevard at the Chippenham. You're not gonna like it. But anyway, we can learn how other counties that have been through the wars about how we can avoid those same mistakes. And Brett, you could just share a few continents that you were able to glean at your knees with Chesterfield, for example.
Okay, I, I mean, uh, it was a broad conversation, just talking about, uh, that one specifically. Yeah, they shared the problems they had with parks developing independently, uh, especially before they had good cross-access management requirements. We, we are better on that now, um, where you've seen it in Chesterfield and other places, where you pull in one gas station development to get to a place very historic, you have a backbone of a big road, that's the, the shop, you have a backbone that will do, uh, itself. But some of the problems we have, parcel by parcel, from small scale development, making sure we have a big cross-access at a minimum. Uh, but also a very big property interest to consolidate, uh, consolidate parcels, working together on access, the, the entrances for, of, of large developments. Yeah, that was, I think, that they hadn't done historically, that's by now, that they're, they're doing a better job on now, and they have so much historic development, still will, will be there, like I said, for many years. Yeah, and, and some of the discussions about there, now they've reached comprehensive planning. Uh, and one thing we can look at is, you know, start the idea for all the areas, so for example, our border, uh, what's Chesterfield Palatine, that's still very much looked at at a high level. They haven't gotten down really deep parcel by parcel, but they generally will probably be okay with, uh, light industrial or, or, or whatever there. And then they'll go area by area, or the, the village land, which, and that was concerning for many, many areas, so not say we copy that in terms of substance. So they'll spend two years, just focus on one area, work with the public, work with this, and really do like a smaller area plan for that. Um, so that's something I think, currently our plan, this is a broader, big picture, we could, future, spend a year on just a seven, eleven, three-day court work, really deep plan that. Route sixty east or village, um, have some very detailed smaller area plans, that's not, they do, you know, they pick a specific area in the county for six years or so, and deep dive in that. So, uh, if you look in or if you want, that one took a long time, whatever, for them, so they're gonna take a break, and let that go to a different area, that's a...
Well, I'm gonna agree with the chairman. I don't think you're ever gonna see seventy thirty Palatine County. You won't see it in my lifetime. I don't think yours either, and, yeah, plus I have to tell you. So when I saw in the comprehensive plan for Palmer Board's place where we live, work, and play. It might be good for Henrico County, that's got a, what's, what's the name you told me, uh...
Sixty-eight, thirty-three, two.
Ain't overachieving the holy grail of seventy thirty. Sure, I would see that in Palatine County. But you're gonna see, instead, is only in the standard period of time, you're gonna see more employment coming to the county. Sure, I don't see any great rush, I don't believe. It's time. So going back to what Bill said, back to the number of people that work in Chesterfield, Henrico, and Richmond. All you gotta do is get up in the morning, go on Route sixty, get that man's car service of stoplights, get in the Gulfstream that goes to two eighty-eight again. Then go back at five o'clock, and you can see the Gulfstream come back. Jobs aren't in Palatine County. Just a fact. We're a residential ruled community that go to work in Richmond, Henrico, and Chesterfield. So the question is, and you've heard me say this to each one of you. What is it that we're best qualified for in Palatine County that we can really carve out versus the rest of the region? Versus the state? What is it Palatine's best qualified? We've had two studies that I'm aware of. The Economic Development Strategic Plan, then we did one with the Economic Development Effort with Liz Bobo and her board, three. This was the Virginia Tech, um, study to go back even further. I don't need to go back there. I'm on this current topic. But the last thing that we heard, and that was from Liz Bobo, is that we were best suited for categories of technology, urban business, tourism.
Healthcare.
And, I mean, medical.
Healthcare, yeah.
Healthcare, assisted living, whatever. So we're still there, you know? What is it that we're best suited for that we want to advertise with our branding that we've created to the world?
I think it's a little more of a challenge than that. I think personally, I don't think it needs to be what we're best suited for. I mean, if you have a business that's, it brings in reasonable revenue, reasonable, you know, amount of jobs, kind of what you were saying, I'm fine with that. I don't, I don't, y, y, you know what, guys? What we have been doing with economic development and work.
And we haven't done anything with economic...
But, but my, my point is, we have, how many studies?
I agree. I agree completely, absolutely.
But we haven't, we've had these studies done repeatedly showing us what we're good for, and, and...
I'm not sure they were...
Well, that's, they're, they're not accurate, and then we're kind of tied, really. I mean, we have no buildings to offer people, we have no land that's preemptively zoned. I mean, if you're a business and you wanna come here, it's a challenge. It's a serious challenge. You gotta get a rezoning, you gotta build a building, you gotta go through five of us. I mean, that's, you know, it's not, there's a reason there's no businesses out here.
That's the reason David said it will be slow.
It will be slow. It will be slow. I mean, I, I wholeheartedly agree with that, but to, I mean, you know, right, how many, we have, how many, you were telling me? Acres on sixty that are gonna, if, just to get an access management waiver, it's like a hundred and eighty access management waivers that we would have to consider. If, I mean, and it sounds minor, but when somebody's coming in, you know, and, and that's another step, that another hurdle that they have to go through. Are they gonna come to Palatine County? Are they gonna go to Goochland? Or are they gonna go to Henrico where it's, it's done?
This, this is something...
Yes.
For your point about, keep, bringing back to access management. We're dealing with that. We have already started dealing with things that couldn't be done, okay? We couldn't have a ten-year plan. We couldn't get rid of RC, okay? We're slowly and surely taking those problems, and we're moving them from landscape. Okay, and we'll, and we'll deal with that. But again, the reason we, in my opinion, the reason we haven't made any progress with economic development, we never decided what we wanted to do. That's the reason I focused on jobs. And revenue. Now, I don't see why, uh, I'm a little curious as to why, both you and Mike, you obviously see it the same way that that is an inhibitor. Okay, for small businesses. I don't see it as an inhibitor at all. I see it as, as, as just a fair statement. Almost every entrepreneur that I've ever met believes they're gonna have revenue, uh, and unless they want just to be, uh, consultants, are going to have employees. One of the reasons you, you got me thinking about this is the, uh, first paragraph up there under overview, the last, uh, sentence. However, rural landscapes create opportunities for agribusiness, outdoor recreation, and tourism that are not present in nearby urban counties. Didn't generate any money. That's a problem. It's just... I'm not interested in things that don't, that, that don't generate revenue. So trying to get, oh, I look at, I look at Route sixty east. We have small parcels. We have good transportation. We have a stream, a large stream of people going by there every day who are potential workers for your business. Small businesses, okay, and in the comprehensive plan definition of commercial, not in the zoning district, it brings in light industrial, okay? So that should be, in my opinion, a light industrial commercial operation, small boxes, uh, that, uh, begin to support each other. What you really wanna do, if you're really clever, is we'll just take machine shops, just, just, I'm just taking that as an example. You wanna build a network of machine shops that support each other, that's, so they all don't do the same kind of work. Or you're looking for the major employers in the region, you're looking for the sub-suppliers for those. I don't wanna see Amazon fulfillment system in Palatine County. I don't wanna see that kind of size business. What I do wanna see are those entrepreneurs and owners who see Palatine as a lifestyle choice for themselves and their business. And that's why they come in, uh, to build their business. And they're, they're going to be businesses that are below the interest level of Henrico and Chesterfield. If Henrico and Chesterfield want that business, they will get it, okay, compared to us. We, we will not be able to success. So we're looking at smaller businesses. We really are. We're looking at business because of our land. Uh, and because of the practicality of dealing with our neighbors. And then also the small, smaller business, twenty-five employees, maybe fifty employees. Those are things that we can assimilate into our community without changing our community. And that's very, very positive. But we have two major assets. One is the eleven thousand people that leave every day, and the other is Route sixty. West in the morning, east in the evening. That's what Innsbruck, we talked about. Broad Street. That means you can move your goods, you can move your people. But you gotta really have a focus on what... But you gotta really have a focus on what, what is it you're trying to achieve with economic development? That's the reason I went through what I did. I don't see revenue and jobs. I didn't just find them, say you had to be this much money, but this, this is, this is what we're looking for. And I don't, I don't see that as, I don't see that as a negative, okay? I just see that as a statement back. That's the only way we are going to improve the life of our citizens with their jobs, to the financial position of the county, is to have more commercial with it.
So how do we begin bringing this into this economic development chapter? That's the million dollar question. I mean, how do we?
First question, you have to decide whether you want, whether you really want all of my thing that says, look. You gotta define it. The second paragraph, okay, says economic development is an important component of the comprehensive plan. Okay, well, that's where you start defining it. Okay, what is it? What is it? What does it mean in the context of the economic comprehensive? We're not defining, we're not trying to define it for, for some other use, just for our comprehensive. What do we expect to get out of it?
You know, I keep a, a dead horse, but I'm asking you. So let me give you an example. You have a company who comes in, moderate around a revenue. Whether that's defined as thirty thousand dollars a year or something like that, and five employees. Would you say that meets the goal of our, because every one of these rezonings has a, you know, component to the comprehensive plan? So would you look at that and say that meets that or it doesn't?
I would say it meets it, okay? But the practical matter is, is our, much to our chagrin, we don't have a clue how much revenue would any of these have. We would like to know, right?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, like in some cases, you even know, like a fast food restaurant typically brings in thirty thousand dollars a year, whatever it is.
But no, I don't see, I don't see that, you know, someone's gonna build, they're gonna have to build a building, it's our building standards. Occupy one this, there. Yeah, I don't, that doesn't, that doesn't set a limitation on it. It just says is ultimately with economic development, you'll get to the point where anyone is gonna want to start, and you got it on your discussion with us. Talk about incentives. Okay, when you get to incentives, you really do have to define what your target is.
Correct.
Targeted, because you're not leaving incentives to everybody. So this is just to start saying that, look, if you come here and you produce just a stream of revenue, you're less interesting to me than someone that produces a stream of revenue and produces jobs. If you come here and produce a stream of revenues and all you do is transfer that revenue to infrastructure costs over here, schools, okay? That's not what we're looking for. Put that back up there, please, give me. These are not, these are concepts, they aren't litmus tests, but it tells you whether you're in the right direction. And economics too, though, doesn't revenue, John. So we need, we need job growth that gets away from government spending and away from cyclical of contractors. Doesn't mean we get rid of our contractors, it just means in the future, what we're looking for is something other than contractors. That's all. Revenue? We need more revenue. That's the only reason we're doing this, okay, is to get more revenue. Uh, because we've got this infrastructure that we've got to pay for. And unless we get some business revenue, then all the citizens, there's one of them, get to pay for it. So that's just a statement, there's nothing controversial about that. And the goal is to reduce taxpayer contribution of the infrastructure cost.
I'm just gonna flag a whole advocate with you again. Let's take, um, a recent rezoning that we had, you know, uh, the Michael Potter case, prime example. I had thirty apartments, but it had upfront, you know.
It had three odd parcels, small retail that are not worth much to our.
And, well, that's not necessarily true, but that's, that's exactly what I'm saying, right? That's exactly, it's been okay.
Small, small retail, which is going away of the internet with, it's not gonna reverse, okay? The internet is siphoning it all. So small retail doesn't produce much revenue. Doesn't say that you can have one, it just says that's not what I'm looking for.
On the flip side, your manufacturing facilities, which revenue those produce. I mean, right now, we don't have a B-hole tax, and you're getting M and T taxes, so depending on your equipment.
It's a real estate tax.
You get some real estate taxes, but outside of that, you're not getting any sales taxes. I, you're almost, are you really, are you making any more on that than you are retail?
Small retail doesn't produce, large retail produces a fair amount of sales tax. Okay, that's why I said small. It's gonna produce less than you're probably gonna get out of your per diem. Um, in modern development, there, there is only one, uh, first of all, modern, modern development has two problems. One, one against our goal, okay? It produces more residential than commercial. In terms of infrastructure costs.
See, right there. It was thirty houses, the, the minimum impact on schools, minimum impact, impact on fire and AMS. And I know it seems like we're getting off target, but they're, I'm trying to make the point with this economic statement. I, I'm very concerned with this because this just seems like something that it's just, you can use it to say no, 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 no.
We don't need that statement to say no.
Yeah. Well, when it doesn't, not in accord with your comprehensive plan, it's another.
Back, go back up to the top, please.
Yeah.
That doesn't say that one job and one dollar are not sufficient.
Well, what do you got? What do you, do you want something like this? I've been talking a lot, Mr. Byerly, Mr. Berry, Mr. Williamson, what do you, what do you intend to do?
Actually. I was sitting here thinking, you know. We're kind of talking around the whole subject. I was thinking about when we did get economic development, we got Walmart. Was that the result of a county initiative for economic development? I don't think it was. They, they came to Palatine, because I remember saying, when there was some opposition, which was Walmart coming in, I said, well, if you didn't want Walmart, why did you reflect that in your zoning, your comprehensive plan subdivision? We were known to just react. And to a greater extent, we still did. But if you've noticed, there's been a paradigm change. With the pandemic, with online shopping, you're not seeing, you know, the office parks, you're not seeing the shop, the same as, you know, we've had these individual conversations. Go down Chesterfield Mall. I don't see that Macy's is standing alive, other than that. You don't see cars in the parking lot, you don't see people inside. We've got the same parcels, same signs that were for sale back miles on the fighting mission, Route sixty. Been a change. And now you have to ask the question, are store finds gonna be the thing of the future going forward? I don't think it is. I think you're already seeing a paradigm change that's being, or has been more entrenched with pandemic, whether it's meetings, whether it's shopping, even dining. People having meals delivered to their homes, they're picking up. There's been a change. So I would have hoped, you know, that we would have had something in the way of, okay, recognizing there has been a paradigm change, but recognizing that the history of Route sixty will probably change from what it's been in my generation. Those two previous segments, what's it gonna look like going forward in the future? But we still need, you know, our repair shops, absolutely, because we're still committed to the jobs in Chesterfield or, you know, Henrico. So we'll still need those, and I'm, I'm still, still getting a certain amount of fast food. I'm okay with that. And, you know, it's what the market, it's what the market is saying. My check is it, I think.
That's exactly the reality.
That's reality, Mr. Williams, you just chucked, chucked it in there. That's correct. That's it. And, you know, eighteen months ago, what was the market taking these to? And now, the market you're talking about, what's it taking this to now? So in an eighteen month period of time, it's a pretty dramatic change, isn't it? So we're sitting here trying to come up with this, as I like to call it, guide, uh, you know, where we want to go for the next thirty years. How we want to develop our county for the next thirty years.
But that's, that's the whole.
But it changes anyway, whatever way.
I, I know. Well, the comprehensive plan is not something you put up on the shelf and then every five years you take it off the shelf. It's a business, Mike. Agreed completely.
And again, channeling us, we haven't always treated it as a business plan in this county. I can tell you. But, um, no, it's, it's the market. The market is gonna drive a lot of this. And we have to be, you know, not tone deaf to what the market is telling us. And we have to somehow get in sync with where the market is taking us. And we have to be able to advantage that. You know, we talked about it in the strategic plan, you know, about technology stuff, being able to have more flexibility to accommodate, you know, employers coming into the county. Uh, I'm open to all of that, okay? What I always, you know, pounded the table on was, you know, I didn't want to do pie in the sky. Y'all have heard me saying, I don't like the words, I think, but, you know, I don't like, anytime you hear some, well, I think. No, I want to know. I want to have the data, I want to have some analysis, that's what's my decision making. That's just where I was trained. So then, to the extent that we can harness what we've got here in front of us and come forward, you know, with something that's right, real, realistic. I'm not interested in, I think, you know, we're best suited for, and I remember, you know, all of those statements of the past that bore no reality or, or any semblance of reality. I don't want to go back to that. I want to go back to what the market is telling us here in Palatine County, where we want. And what can we do to join forces so that we can have economic development in this guy?
So does that, do you guys, are you comfortable with the strategies that are currently in the pipeline?
No, no.
Okay, then.
Before we get there, could I ask you? We've asked pretty broad questions. And so my suggestion is, we don't, what I'd like to do is think about some of the things we've talked about. I don't want to go on through the strategies, okay? I'd like to think about the things that we talked about, the things that you said. Do you see it differently? That's why we have a discussion. And in our next session, we try and figure out how we put all of this together. We're not gonna do that, no. I don't think, I don't think of that, okay? But I have, if we go through, I have some, like, I have all kinds of questions about strategy.
Yeah, let's, let's kind of dig into that a few ways, I mean, let's dig into the strategy a little bit, so we can get that a little focus, or maybe home in a little bit.
Let's look at page fifteen. They talk about heritage and agriculture, okay? We somehow got lost in the economic development wall, thinking that agriculture and agritourism and deep, uh, farms aren't gonna do anything. They are not.
Whoever this P O R is, we must have paid her to tell us agrisms, right?
So this, so this is page fifteen, most of it is useless. It's useless, okay?
I would agree.
Page sixteen, regional proximity. The first paragraph. As the county population grows, there will be advanced retail offices and other businesses that provide services to surrounding neighborhoods. That sounds very much like a suburban, no, that's not what it's gonna be. Where are you at the first paragraph?
Yeah, the regional.
Okay. The last, as the county, the last sentence, my first paragraph. As the county population grows, there will be advanced retail offices, retail offices and other businesses that provide.
I think that's what Mr. Williams just went over with, that markets change, we're at a different place. Back to this change.
All right.
Okay, we've moved to infrastructure. We're not talking about broadband in there in a way in which we're doing it today. Okay, we've done some things with broadband, okay? Well, we did some one things.
Okay. Add broadband componentry to that paragraph.
Rather than just a notation. Population in growth. The second sentence. As the population continues to grow, we afford to maintain, maintain socio, socioeconomic diversity. What the hell would that mean? I grabbed it on the line.
And it's probably better to say something just as I first, first, many different versions of how I was, I think, versus.
Well, just something other than, I, I just, somebody answered, what does that mean? I can't.
I'd just take that out.
So you're taking that whole, it's just socioeconomic out?
True.
Or the, or the whole sentence?
I would just take the whole sentence out. Are you okay with that, just taking the whole sentence out?
I am.
All right.
The last sentence in that, the county should strive to attract employment that's available with populations of weak priests competing to a county. We should strive, we should set that as a goal. To, oh, create more jobs, that's what it's really talking about. It's talking about taking some of that eleven thousand people and keeping them out there.
Some more forceful language on that last one.
Okay, now we're going to goals and objectives. Here's, what the, um, this sentence refers to the two thousand sixteen plan. That's these, okay? This is, this is the slide sheet that went with this huge piece. So this, think of this as a clip from the.
Got up here to.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So this is just a, I had this, I had a, I had a copy. So this gives you, as I look at this plan, uh, so it, objective eighty-one, implement the two thousand sixteen economic guide of note. Uh, there's some pieces of it that makes sense, and some pieces of it doesn't. I'll also explore that whole thing.
We could probably strike the whole thing and then just take what we like out of this and put it in a different objective.
Well, that, if, I think, so, so if you gave you that, you want to bring some things back in. One of the things, could I have chased my number two? Slide number two. Uh, one of the things that was in here in this two thousand sixteen, it was a special, it was a goal, okay? Business professional, professional occupational license tax, grocery receipts. I, I got, I want to make sure everybody understands, I got an example coming out of here, of how those fees actually exist. Make that a little bit there. This is from Fairfax County. Uh, and what it says is, if your grocery receipts are zero to ten thousand dollars, you pay nothing. Ten thousand, fifty thousand, they pay thirty bucks. Up to, up to a hundred thousand dollars, you pay fifty bucks. So not having a goal policy, if you're a small business, not having a goal policy, that doesn't mean, I mean, you have to get to a million. So the other piece I think is really important, if we can scroll up a little bit, is wholesale versions is four cents per hundred. Research and development is thirty-one cents per hundred, unless you are a certain federally funded R and D prime contractor, then goes to three cents. So you can discourage businesses, you can encourage businesses. We should look at goal balls as, first of all, you have to have a certain sized business before it's worth anything, okay? And so you need to understand that, if, if we use that as an economic or development tool. And two, we have to decide whether, I don't know how selective you could be. Uh, this has got, telephone numbers, twenty-four cents, okay? So it racks in pretty hard. We want to do, we could rack solar companies, pretty hard, okay, actually establish it. So I think we should look at goal ball as, as a tool. But I wanted to show you the. But I wanted to show you the, unless the business is a certain size, if we're trying to promote this, it's not worth anything. So if you get, you get to make it four cents wholesale merchants, if you get to a million bucks, you're paying 4,000 bucks. So, it's just an understanding, if we go and look at that document I gave you, and they talked about, it's in the goal ball, that you talked about. Wow, y'all really ought to go out and promote that. So, yeah.
Okay, so we're striking one and maybe just adding some of this back into the other objectives.
I'm on page eighteen. Objective ED three. Encourage and support initiatives to target economic sectors that capitalize on local and regional strengths for a systematic approach based on economic, based on an economic development plan. So I don't know how to explain maybe what that means.
I've got the same thing noted.
It's a nice ring of words.
It's just words.
And strategy ED three D, the last strategy for that. Encourage development of niche farming activities and agriculture, support this.
Not a money maker.
Can I ask you a question? So is this from the 2019? Andrew, none of this stuff. This is from 2019. And then, um, he got an update. And who was that update? From 2010? It took the three years to get to that, right? Was this the same as 2010, or was it different?
Um, I have to.
It would be different, Mike, because this came from the economic development strategic plan that was done in 2016.
And in 2010, we didn't have the same setup, Andrew, of how we built.
Exactly. Laid out.
Look at, I'm sorry.
One thing with three, ED three, Roxanne, Brett, was that meant to be sort of where you were going to try to create economic incentives to get businesses in here? Do you know? I mean, I'm just, for some clarity, or do you, do I strike the whole thing, or do you want to?
Yeah, because we're, I mean, we're not recommending to target the sectors. It's more like, like what you've got to say, maybe minimum employment, investment thresholds, but not specific sectors.
Okay, I think we're eliminating them then.
Okay, because we want to get rid of three C's for sure.
Yeah.
Empower the Economic Development Authority, part of the comprehensive plan over stuff.
Yeah, we can do this, this too, so we're going to. Get rid of ED point four, just get rid of the whole point.
Well, that's a tip, and strategies.
ED three, all of it?
Yeah, I think all of it's gone, yeah.
Let's go to ED four. Look at four B. How do we do that? Well, emphasis on the word controlling, we don't control anything.
I mean, you could say, for marketing, properties for economic development.
That would be a different thing.
Yeah, and just eliminate controlling. And also on that objective, I think we need to have more of a realistic, than the 30, 70. Yeah, so what do you all, at this rate, 90, 10? I mean, it's a little more, or drill. Yeah, what do you think, I mean, it's embarrassing almost, but it's.
Eighty-five, you know, I think it would be a start.
It worked for, it worked for our tax rates, it'll work for this.
But a lot of these things are just generic statements.
They are, they're very generic.
And it's no specificity today, it's no real object to a plan that you can replicate time into.
Well, look at four C, this four C is something we have never done in this game. Manage residential growth.
It sounds good, but.
We don't know how to do that. My worship road example, the perfect event.
But you guys have to remember, this is a guide, you know, it's not supposed, I don't think you're supposed to have the specificity in this.
We have never managed residential.
Yeah, I was talking about what he was saying, how each one of these, they are general, you're correct, they are general in nature.
They should be, you know, even if they are general, it should, you know, have a line going to something that we're doing, that we can identify, that we're actually going to do or are doing. A lot of these have been, you know, in place from the study from 2016. Here it is, we're in 2021, and we're talking about this in a generic way. And yes, have we done business retention? Yes, we definitely did, okay? Done a good job of that, okay? These other things that we're looking at, I can't tell you that we've done anything. After four or five years, and they're still showing up as things that are part of, whether you want to call this a guide, the plan, blueprint, they're still showing up as something that we're pursuing. I don't know that we are.
Strategy four D. Promote land use patterns that create population densities that demand additional important, that's a rooftop strategy. That's the rooftop strategy which we rejected, and it actually works against.
Yeah, you can strike that.
The one above it.
So we're leaving ED four D, or whatever you want to see, is that just commentary, or?
I think leaving four C, but eliminating four D, did that?
We've never managed residential growth.
Well, rezonings are managing residential growth.
Most of it's occurring outside of our zoning. What did, what did you just say? We got, we got it. We don't, we have never controlled residential growth.
I don't violate that.
No, no.
Of course we have. I mean, of course you have, I mean, every resuming you get.
Well, look at, 95% of our county, okay, can be developed by rights.
In some cases, it can.
All of this, is that 10 acres can be developed by rights?
But to say that we don't manage.
No, we've never said it. You ever heard, you know, we've said no to rezonings, we're not able to, everything's up there. We've never tried to control residential growth.
I disagree, I still disagree, we just got rid of single cut, we got rid of RC. We were doing, you know, we've eliminated.
Well, RC was not about residential growth.
It wasn't, but you could have had it, if you look at RC.
Yeah, but it was all along 60.
Yeah, it was along 60, but I, I just take a different approach, I think we very much, you know, have.
Did it look that way when you developed all seven of them?
But they still had to come in for a rezoning, not, not saying it was appropriate.
I think we're talking semantics. It might not have been effective in what we did at the time, but we were trying to control land development in Palatine County. Did everybody agree with some of the strategies that have been put in place? And we had a debate in the county about the efficacy of our sub divisions, for example. Okay? Some people thought that was a good, and it's true, and others thought, no, it's, you took a lot of land. So, the question is, what do you want to do now? I mean, I don't want to argue whether we do or we don't, you know, I don't have that sense, what are you going to do next?
I would love to, I would love to be able to control the amount of residential growth. Somewhat, I don't know, I mean, what was, because that's the other component of trying to change that ratio.
You, you have the tools, the general, somebody has given us the tools. The question has always been, you have the political will to use the tools that the general somebody gives you.
Well, it was a radical thought, to actually look at residential impact on our infrastructure and make a decision based on that. That was considered radical in that position in the last 12 months.
But I want to go back to these strategies, you know, if I didn't have these strategies in there, what difference would it make? If I didn't, you know, these ED four, whatever, they weren't in here, would they make any difference? What do they do for us?
Nothing. Okay, so we need strategies that actually do something to that.
But whatever you do, you want to be meaningful.
I would think. This is one of our core strategies.
But I think, and I, I would like to refer to Brett and Roxanne, you know, when looking at these, is there a way that we could? In your opinion, you know, looking at, do you really look at the cop plan? I mean, how can we, do these, no, I mean, so nobody really looks at it, looks at it.
Should we ask a question?
Yes.
So, when somebody calls you that wants to start a business, open a business, is the top plan coming apart?
They need to rezone their property, property, that side of it.
So they're looking for a location to put a business in. Right, and that's your land use, right? So that's where you guys got it?
We're not looking at any H F.
Is the potential developer, business owner within that?
I mean, I was just going to say.
Don't worry.
Well, no, but that's not, that's not, that's not quite true. If it is a major developer, a large developer, they are looking at.
They'll look, they'll look at the, I believe, land use by far, but you're not looking at economic development, I wouldn't think at all. Absolutely, yeah.
A lot of this is the same redo, the 16 plan.
Which nobody liked.
Well, it was done, you know, it's a momentum trade, it's a residential education program, we do that now, so that's.
Do you think it'd be reasonable to task these guys, who are looking at this, to come up with some objectives that would be realistic, that would be?
We'll move the needle.
Yeah, I mean, do you think?
I think so.
Okay, why don't we do that? You guys might be doing that.
As Mr. Williams just said, he's going to refer to his experts, let's refer to our experts.
Yeah, let's do that.
Phone calls come to you guys, so give us some guidance and suggestions and options there.
See, knock that chapter out.
Oh, we got ED five.
No, we just got rid of that. They're gone. They're now gone.
Now, let's go to. ED six. Support agriculture, that's got to go. That's not going to give us anything.
We just said. Gone.
Not bad, housing. Okay, I have.
What we, what we have now in economic development, what do we have to do with this?
What are we doing?
I don't want to be sarcastic. We have, we have, we're just finishing.
Yeah, we finished that, they're going to give us some strategies that they feel they can implement, they're going to go back and tweak some of the verbiage in the front part, get rid of that whole section that we didn't like, and.
What are we going to do about, what you're not reading, without the purpose?
Oh, yeah, uh, no, David wanted to think about something else for the next time, I'd say. That was the general layout saying. I think you're thinking of me angst, but I'm, maybe I'm the only one that it gives angst to. Maybe we could tweak it a little bit, compromise.
But you're not, so we're going to come back and redisess chapter four?
Yes, we will have to definitely discuss chapter four.
Yes.
We're going to come back and discuss everything.
Now, are we going to hold for two hours?
Uh, ideally, yes. Ideally, yes, but I think we can start dabbling in the housing, at least.
No, 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 I guess, I just.
Okay. Two hours, okay. Who wants to go first?
Housing. I think as part of the overview, we need to state what we are, we've got it in tabular form, but, you know, what community, a single family, what, would land stay that way? Do we see that as the future? Do we see a change in that? That's the question. That, that, I think is where we start. This is where we are today, and this is where I see us going in future, I don't see a major change. A homeowner for a single family home in a rural setting, the other one looming, his house is close shopping to another amenities. We're not providing that.
Where is that second?
I'm sorry, that's in, that's in the overview first chapter.
Okay, yeah.
Second sentence.
Yeah, there are limited options for low maintenance housing in smaller lots. Less of housing choice may make it difficult for existing residents to find suitable housing as their circumstances change, or for new home buyers to secure housing that meets their needs.
This will allow the county, last instance, to meet the needs and preferences of its residents. We're not going to meet the needs and preferences of all of our citizens. And we need to meet main things.
Right.
So what kind of housing? I mean, see, land use map, uh, that the planning commission suggested was that anything outside of the growth districts would be 10 acres. I don't see that at the end of this.
You don't see that as one?
Anything outside of the growth districts would be 10 acre minimum lots.
You think that's aspirational, or you think that's?
I don't think that's, they just, everything would be in a conservation subdivision. I don't think that's right. I don't think we've had a discussion about whether we want 5 acre or 10 acre.
Right.
Okay, that's a discussion that has to take points. But now that we're talking about housing, what we're really going with this is density.
Correct.
We're going to densify, and so what is it going to look for?
And that's where some of this might, might get far a little bit.
Oh, I know what I'm going to do.
I mean, personally, I do believe we need smaller lot developments in the county, not large, you know, you know, swapping.
I believe.
Neighborhoods, but I, I do think it would be appropriate to have some densities where people, you know, if you are aging and you don't want to take care of, you know, like a Scottsville kind of thing, a couple more subdivisions like that, I think is totally appropriate.
Right, you're interrupting there, you said, I, you said, I believe, okay, which is synonymous with I think, and what do you base that?
From what I've heard. Citizens.
We've got a major influx of people coming.
Yeah.
Just for larger lots. Some people consider 2 acres a large lot. Some people consider 10 acres a small one. So, we have, uh, done away with essentially the 2 acre zoning. So we have a 5 acre zoning.
Yep, and 10 acres.
10 acres zoning. And then we have this mishmash of ordinances that provide some level of higher densities.
Right, which we want to get rid of, you know, I think.
You said, you said to a point.
Yeah.
Now, just a personal observation that I have, getting to your point. Michael Potter's development around the courthouse. Basically, it's developed under RU, which is four units per acre, okay? But it has a maximum lot size that you can really get into four acres per acre. Just working, talking about small lot sizes, that in a village area makes sense to me. So I, I would agree with you in certain places.
Right, exactly, absolutely, yeah, in certain places, I think it's appropriate.
But we've got to agree, we're talking about housing, you got to talk about density, or you'll never get any further. What do you want? What will, what does Mr. Fire label, what does he not? But those, those are the basic decisions we have to make before you can go any further.
I agree, wholeheartedly, absolutely, yeah. So? What do you guys think is appropriate densities?
So. When you talk about, I mean, you're talking about the scale of this and the number, your density issue, and then you want to figure out where? Where is that place? Okay, so versus Scottville, you know, courthouse area, that's an acceptable area, it's there. Where's the next place? So we don't have anything based upon our land use now that kind of says where we could do smaller lots. Do we need to have that, look at that, in terms of where would this be an acceptable place? Or do you guys just want to look at, what's the number? Or do you guys just wanna look at what's the number?
I think the number covers.
Then I'll look at.
I think you gotta start with the number, yeah.
I guess maybe for this chapter, I think this is talking about the types of housing we want. That's basically what I heard. But I don't, I don't think it is because, for example, the project next to Wells Fargo, the four houses.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
That's six something units an acre.
Okay.
Something else, five three-story townhouses could also be six units an acre. I don't think discussing the number gives you to the types of housing we want. Those are, you could have different projects with different housing types with the same density and like one, not the other.
I see what you're saying.
No one's complaining about the project across from both.
No, that's cute, that's a lot.
Six units an acre. But Wells Fargo was using the four court house square. And I'm not talking about.
He's not talking about it, he's saying the look of it is appropriate. Yeah, yeah.
What types of housing? That's single-family most of it.
Yeah.
Well, we've already said that, I said, that I see going forward a predominant and dominant would still be single-family.
I have doubt of it.
So, so any, any townhouse, multiple occupancy, finds a rule being a smaller one. It could be a component of all. So the question is, how much, really, how much can you stand? When I went back and looked at the comprehensive plan that preceded 2010, and that really before UDA came in and took it, I thought the county, on a zoning perspective and density, was pretty much headed in the right direction. The old RU combined with two different kinds of houses. Density definitive one, whether you're a board sewer, and it had a minimum lot size. I thought that that made a lot of sense. And I consistently gone back and looked at it. I'd like for y'all to take a look at that and see what you. Sorry, we gave it off.
Yeah.
Again, we were forced to. So that's my answer, is to go back and look at that. The RU density with that, as I can see, does that, does that provide a level of that meet your demands in terms of small lots or density, but you talk about where and where.
Right, right. No, that was prior to the 2010.
If you, if you look at our zoning book right now and go to the transition zones, RU's, it'll explain it.
I guess one thing that might be useful for all too is the planning commission got a packet that showed different projects and what their densities were. So you can kinda see what.
Perspective.
Three units an acre looks like. It's kind of meaningless to say two units an acre. What does that actually mean in reality? So that's helpful to the ones in that.
Yeah.
Well, but no, that's, that's just one of them. The other component is the minimum lot size. That has more to do with what density you can really achieve.
Yeah, yeah, but I think, I think I was thinking at this higher level, we talk about two units an acre, what is that? What is that in reality? Like, that isn't something you have to pay for lots.
Yeah.
But the lot, the lot size.
Yeah, exactly. Um, so on to the housing. I mean, is this, could this be something that we could tweak some of the verbiage in this right now? I mean, in the overview? I mean, there's only so many ways we can slice and dice the overview. I mean, you know, for instance, you know, where it has, as an alternative, this plan of revisions to the subdivision and zoning ordinances are creating opportunities. Uh, I'm sorry, the third paragraph.
Most of the county's?
You got it, the very last sentence. You know, we talked about, about the villages and how the villages aren't really realistic. So should we just write that whole sentence out?
Why not just put no there?
Exactly, yeah, so let's just get, get rid of it.
In the last paragraph, right underneath where you just wrote, not only can county housing needs be met by building new, but encouraging reinvestments. We have that in there. If it's, if it's, the market, if it's a salvageable house, the market will fix it and sell it.
Do we have that problem at all with older, from what you guys have witnessed?
I mean, most of our zoning complaints, which relate a lot of times to property condition, are in our, in our. Almost half our components are a junk.
Okay, the house or the yard.
Like, I think it's really cool that they do.
I haven't been curious.
It is on the top of screens, it's on like the table, negative heat or something. I have like a picture where I can show you guys.
Because to Mr. Cox's point, if that's not a problem, and I agree totally, take it out, but people are constantly buying and disavenging or whatever you wanna, whatever you call the house. You know, fixing it up.
If you look at, if you go up the other, the next column, background. So while much of the county's housing stock consists of single-family homes and large lot developments, beginning to provide greater housing options. Existing and planned developments, courthouse building near Route 7288, 711, interchange, those are two very, very different sizes and scales. That's from ferry Michael Potter to Casey.
Right, right, right.
Thank you, go bring Casey. On foot or Michael's is. Your stretch. And so this is now talking about, once again, we're getting back to densities. These higher density developments, okay, we're gonna be, we're trying to, we've already decided, we don't know what that means.
Exactly. What is high density gonna look like?
So I can't, I can't finish that paragraph until we know. H twenty-two, affordability. Maintaining policy of affordable housing can help the county attract a diverse workforce. No, we have the workforce, and we are the workforce, okay? We got eleven thousand people living.
So getting rid of that sentence would be fine, and starting where following one works.
We, we have been the workforce for the region for a while.
All right.
Now, as the price of housing increases both locally and regionally, demand for affordable housing will rise accordingly. Smaller lots attached to housing, multifamily housing, rental auction, more compact development forms may increase the supply of affordable homes. It also works against your seventeen, I see your eighty-five fifteen goal. You start talking about density. The whole issue of affordable housing is something that the marketplace is making a tremendous problem everywhere. They're not needing that. And I don't know that we have tools to make a significant difference. The only true affordable housing is when you start subsidizing. All of the studies say that subsidized housing, you have to either have transportation to jobs, you have to have jobs. I've seen the PCU study delineated the areas in, in the metropolitan area that where that would be working, you're not wrong. Put to that end, you've got this table, total home sales in Palatane, my price range. That, that's one of those tables that don't tell you anything. But if you take it and you say, okay, for two hundred and twenty-five thousand down, that's fifteen percent of our home sales. If you look at two hundred and twenty-five thousand to three hundred and fifty thousand, that's forty-two percent of our sales, and the remainder is forty-two percent. You start, however you wanna group. When you start grouping these in large, then you have some meaningful information that you can understand. It says, okay, we still have fifteen percent of our housing stock, which is all for the beta dog. Two hundred thousand is considered affordable in the region. And forty-two percent is sentimental, and another forty-two percent is higher than that. So that begins to give you a real picture, rather than all these little bitty components. Same thing with new homes.
Yeah. Do you think we should consolidate that then? Just go like zero to two fifty?
Yeah, I, I can't.
We would be going back to where it was before. We purposely warranted this kind of granularity so that we could do exactly what Bill just did if you wanted to go and go against certain price points. You were able to do the math and come up with, okay, we're saying that you're looking at housing O two a certain price. What do the percentages add up to total? For example, if you go to two hundred and forty, forty-nine thousand, you're looking at twenty point four percent of the house. Twenty point four sold at two hundred and forty-nine thousand, you look. So keeping them in there are current allows us to do the different manipulations.
If you'd be, yeah, I thought you had.
So what, sorry, go back to the, what are you looking at?
First sentence you're scratching, first sentence.
Go ahead.
Tables are staying, and then we just get to the objectives, which, a lot of objectives on us. Um, this we might have to look at.
What were you?
On the objective page.
Twenty-five, okay. But housing goal. Palatane County will have a diverse range of housing that provides living opportunities to all regions, all living in small stages of life, so will we try to do?
I think so.
Where it's essentially out and like it will space single-family detached.
Centric.
So the housing goal has to be rewritten. Same thing with HS one.
And HS two.
And HS two. I find the, the problem of affordable housing to be probably the most difficult and vexing problem that we have in trying to keep a rural community. Keep a community that likes the way it is, that also looks like reality. People are definitely. I, I don't have that. This isn't the answer, though.
I, I think some of this will get, maybe we can get some clarity when we come back ironically after the land use and we kinda hone in on the densities.
Honing in on density in that community, right?
And what that looks like. Because it's hard to have an objective if we don't, you know, at the record what we're trying to get. Um. Yep. So going, do you guys think you, that you guys can have these things done within, like the economic development section within a week that we could go back and kinda?
Well, even if they don't, we can go ahead and do the next one while they're working. We don't, we don't have to get back to this each chapter next week.
Give them two weeks or whatever it may be.
So going forward, you wanna get to, um, infrastructure and, wow. We've got the infrastructure.
We should get to seven.
And then eight is our land use, our top. Eight is land use, right? Yeah, so. That's gonna be the big one.
Infrastructure's gonna be interviewed.
So we'll plan on seven and eight next week. And then maybe the week after that tie everything back in. Well, infrastructure, land use will probably be a few weeks, so.
Land use would be more. But remember, though, we can have, and I'm trying to slow this down, but we can't hold someone to get this done. But we're not gonna be able to take it out to the public, whatever we wanna do until after the summer. If we set end of the year, go to public, we say, well, this is what we think. What do you think? Never tried to take a plan out there this summer.
All right. Well, now we have our second public comment period. Anyone wishing to speak, please state their name and address for the record.
My name's Joey Buckhead, thirteen, ten, Goff Road. Really want to plan and speak, but after kind of the tone of the meeting kind of started out, and I've got a couple comments I'd like to put in there. If I really had dated, you know, people through experts for comprehensive plan updates, and I'm not trying to defend anyone, but I mean, I don't know everybody in the room, but, you know, I, I don't know if there's any experts here in this room. And maybe there should be. You know, maybe, you know, the guys who are probably your closest to experts who are planning about really have very little, you know, input. They allow. Another thing I heard Mr. Cox say, he wants total control of residential growth. And if you want total control of what other people can do with their property, then I would recommend purchasing the property. If you want total control, maybe Palatane County should purchase the property. And, you know, it's, this is a guide. You, you, you wanna rewrite this entire thing. I came here to basically hear about transportation and land use. And planning commission didn't touch any of these chapters. You wanna do a major rewrite of a guide that is a twenty to thirty-year guide? I don't think this is the way to do it. You know, it kinda defeats the purpose of a twenty to thirty-year guide if you update it, you know, every two years. So I, I just, you know, if we're gonna go through and completely gut chapters one through seven, you didn't give your planning commission members, you know, a, a chance to look at it, which I don't understand. I agree that in order to, you know, make the most of eight and nine transportation land use, it is a reflection of the first seven chapters. So if we're gonna do a major overhaul of the comprehensive plan, we should make it clear that that's what we're.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Anybody on Zoom?
The vice is in.
All righty, any county administrator comments?
No, ma'am, chair, my only comment is kudos to the board for a lively Americana-type exchange of ideas. And we talked about things in a helpful manner, so kudos to the board.
There was no blood on the table.
Any more comments?
So that people may be more fully informed, first seven chapters were given to the planning commission. I was instrumental in making that request to my planning commissioner that that be included on the county website and for review. So to say that they didn't get a chance to review it, they did. Now, this other thing about if you want to have development discounting, or if you wanna control things, you need buy property. No, that's not the reason why we have comprehensive zoning ordinance subdivision ones. We do it so that we can provide for the orderly development of this county. You're not the one who asked. One example of how things get messed up. Over at Lake Shawnee, which came in back in the sixties, back before we had zoning ordinance, we're still trying to fix things over in that community, which is recently mentioned by staff that probably have more than one or two problems over there. Coming full staff all the time. So as I explained, my cousin, when he had concerns about something that came in around him, and he thought, well, it should just be, go ahead and do it. Well, again, the reason that you have comprehensive plans, zoning ordinance, subdivision ones, is to provide for the orderly development of the county. That's our solution. And no, we're not experts. As I pointed out at the beginning of this meeting, this is the people's document. We represent you. That's why I wanted the inclusion of that statement about what the purpose of the comprehensive plan was as it pertains to the quality of life of the citizens in this county. So I'd just like to make that statement. I'd also like to, Mr. Carmack, point out that when we had Senator Warner here.
I'd also like to, Mr. Carmack, point out that when we had Senator Warner here at the Richmond Regional Transportation Plan Organization meeting, he spoke to the fact of very broadband being a component of transportation because now more people are working from home. They're not going to work. They're working from home. So you're seeing that, you know, as an effect on your roads. The other thing I'd like to share is in the Virginia Business Magazine, there's an article recently titled Moving Out. Instruction projects shift to suburbs, rural areas. Basically, the article is about a new paradigm shift. It says the next ten years will be the decade of suburbs. People are moving out of the cities and they're moving to suburbs. And this is going to be particularly true, the article points out, Northern Virginia and the Richmond region. So going to the earlier conversations by King and Lake, y'all were talking about we're going to feel pressure. I'd be happy to share this article with you because it substantiates your earlier comments. Again, they're making no bones about it, this is going to be the decade in suburbs. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other board comments?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I have a question, uh, has to do with how we're going to get things done. Heard a couple of different things at different times and it has to do with transportation.
Okay.
Is this something that, at one point, something that we were going to try and do, another point that we were going to, if we're going to, if we're not going to do the transportation thing, we're going to bring in an expert to do that, we need to go ahead and get that RFP out there now. Not, not wait till the numeric nine.
Yeah, yeah, that's an excellent point, Mr. Cox, because we've kind of given various directions to staff at various times as to what we're going to do.
We need, we need to make that decision PDQ, so if we're going outside, fine, if we're going to do it ourselves, then it'll, it'll follow chapter eight.
Yeah.
You know, Mr. Cox shared with the chairman, the last board, there had been a decision made that we would go outside for the transportation plan, that it was acknowledged, that we couldn't do it in-house.
And then, yeah, to interject, I think at one meeting, you said, when Rebecca was there, you thought we could do it in-house and we never kind of got any sort of affirmation.
If that's what you heard, then I'm espoused to, because I didn't intend to say that.
Okay, okay.
So we're going outside, then we, can we go ahead and get some RFP?
And what are we having them do exactly? Is it going to be the thoroughfare plan? Just so we know, what is this company doing?
Well, that's going to be, that's going to be a problem because you hit right on it. The trip generation from your future land use map is going to govern your thoroughfare plan into the future. And because what they're going to do, they're going to look at the average daily traffic count, peak hours a day, then they're going to project forward with build date using your future land use map to calculate the trip generation and to add that in and then calculate flood rates, levels of service, et cetera. We can, I understand that, but we can go ahead and figure out who we're going to use. They're going to use the same methodology. So that when we get enough information, that they can start their plan.
I don't have a problem with going ahead and start crafting what we're going to need for it, but that's, that's, we're, we're doing that down in the transportation part. One of the things, going back to Mr. Carmack's, I believe, about waiting, yours too, Bill. One of the things we could do, start thinking about what zoning ordinance is going to look like. I probably, Mr. Shart, I'm invited.
Andrew's looking a little worried over there. I said, Andrew is looking a little worried over there. Andrew, do you have a comment?
Well, I'm going to leave it with staff, but anyway, I've had a conversation with him and I believe I've talked to Mr. Smither. What I'm saying is, decisions have to be made about who's going to do it, what's the timeframe for getting it done and what does it look like?
First, we need to finish the comp plan because the zoning ordinance.
Yeah, I agree, it's real tough for them to.
You better, you better start thinking about it because, you know, you've got these new land use designations and it's going to be coming up when we get to the future land use map. Where you're saying the old zoning districts are the implementation tools for the new land use designations that you have and the proposed land use plan. And I'm not in agreement with that and I've spoken forever about that issue. So that's kind of, took us three years. Two thousand and ten, it was the final ordinance to judge.
Hopefully it doesn't take that long.
Hopefully it won't, but in fact, when I wrote two thousand and ten, because it changed all of the land use designations, there was no reference to any particular zoning district in what this law is about.
Right.
But in fact, it, it, we managed to survive three without it, without them being in Canada.
We all know.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Well, based on my experience, as sure as it is, who knows who'll be sitting in this board by the time this is completed. From what I've seen, I would agree with definitely what Mr. Williams said, the people's document. I think he's a hundred percent correct with that. If we represent the people, we should listen to them. Mr. Parkett, I appreciate you speaking out, you know, I wish there was more people that would speak that. And I would like to make a suggestion right now, that as opposed to having these meetings at three o'clock in the afternoon, we need to consider having one or two of them at six thirty for other people who can't be here at three o'clock in the afternoon. The, the input that we get from the citizens is extremely important. Business owners, when I walk around the room, that's what I'm looking for, where's the business owners that want to come out here and speak? Cause we're talking about property up and down Route sixty and the development of this county. We need to know what you think and how you feel about what we're doing and the direction we're taking this county. If you don't speak up, you don't say what you want to say, we don't know what it is. Property owners, there's nothing that prevents anybody from coming up here. We can zoom and, and they can talk, you can be here at three, you can be here at six thirty, but I do think we need to consider having one of these meetings or more at six thirty in the evening. Me personally, as one member of this board, I do not have any problem with an advisory committee being developed to bring conversations to this board. I don't have any problem with it, I support. It, it's, I remember back the last board, there was a committee put together by, I believe, Mr. Tucker, a small group, that was Mr. Williams, Mr. Melian and Miss Carmack. Even if we got outside of that and there was a, um, Mr. Parkett wanting to put a group together, I don't have any objections to that whatsoever. The more people we can hear from, the better decision we can have. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, from what I've seen, finally brought up the process. I want to give, I don't care what time, I got to be here, I got to be up. I'll be there. But the process of putting together a plan is the first step. One of the, my criticism to the planning commission was they rushed it way too fast. They didn't give the citizens an opportunity to really understand what was happening with the short period done to renew, it ended up, ended up hollow. We will have, once we have an idea of what makes sense to us, we would be actively taking in help for the community to look at, looking for their suggestions, their ideas. This Carmack, I can, I'm planning today, how many months?
Months.
A month. Every organization that would let her, she talked to, explaining, you know, you need to pay attention to this, so your performance, Riley, is absolutely spot on, getting my book, but it's not just us sitting in this room making decisions, it's the start of it, then it goes out, then we have to have formal public review. And then we have to have hearings, all which offer opportunities and changes. And if you remember, with the last comp plan on the last day of the wedding, the doctor changed it for me to know what it had been heard of before, so.
Yeah, I'm pretty familiar with it. I mean, I'm also familiar with the fact that we appoint planning commissioners, so they work the last few appointments, they do it the right way, they change them on us.
Ms. Perry? I have no problem with kind of ping ponging meetings at different times. I think the, uh, the three o'clock was strictly more for staff, you know, to, so to minimize the night meetings, but what we can do is a few of these and then maybe when we have like kind of a comprehensive overview of several of the chapters, we can maybe make that one at six thirty, so kind of go back and forth.